Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It is 6:15 on November 4, 2025. This meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. A note for the record, this meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an ultimate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. There's been one recording this meeting tonight. Seeing none, a note for the record participated in tonight's meeting are Board members Liz Klein and Julie Straley and Chair William Ramsey. For those willing and able, please stand and face the flag of our nation.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I believe we have three sets of minutes to go over tonight. Are you ready to proceed, Liz?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
All right. With that, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated October 21, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. The motion carries unanimously. I'll take a second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated October 23, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Motion carries unanimously. I'll take a third motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated October 28, 2025.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is potential vote to sign the memorandum of agreement with Teamsters Local Union 25 Supervisors. Tom, you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. So, as you know, we signed the MOA for the DPW rank and file contract last week. That contract included a change of hours. Instead of starting at 7:30, we're starting the rank and file employees at the DPW at 7:00 now to coincide with the contractors who work for the town, who start at 7:00, and so they're not in town waiting for our employees to show up for half an hour before they start. So, we made that adjustment, but we also, in order for our employees to be managed and supervised, we need to change the supervisor contract to match that timeframe, so that they're also starting at 7:00 along with their employees. And then the other piece of this was, as part of the rank and file contract, we changed, we awarded all of the rank and file employees a $300 per year stipend for being essential employees. That was negotiated for the rank and file, which is the vast majority of our employees. The supervisors, Jack Manning, who is the liaison from the Personnel Board, and I discussed this and felt that it was appropriate to award this to the three, I think, maybe four, three, I think, supervisors that are in the supervisor unit as well. They also are essential, as all their employees are, so we wanted to make those two changes midterm. So, this is a midterm change to this contract. We don't normally do this, but because we couldn't have all of our employees in there unsupervised, we had to make that change, and we wanted to correct the essential employee clause at the same time. So, this has been agreed to by the Personnel Board Liaison Team and myself. And the union has ratified it. Should you all agree to it, it can become law right now, whatever policy.
Thank you. And so, it's only, it's only three supervisors in that bargaining unit?
Four total, but one's vacant.
One's vacant, so there's three, okay.
Yeah.
And so, this stipend just brings supervisors, lines them up with the other bargaining unit?
Exactly.
Okay. Yeah, Jack did mention this last week, I believe, so I have no additional questions. Liz, do you have anything?
Just one question about the timing. So, this goes through 6:30, 2026, and their new contract will, we're starting to negotiate for July 1, 2026?
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. So, amazingly enough, we probably, if we're going to start the negotiating six months early, that means January.
Right.
Which is, in other words, a couple of months from now.
Yeah, okay.
It never ends.
But yes, this all looks good to me. Just one request to change my middle initial.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My legal name is F. Klein.
Yes, of course.
And if you could add my initial, middle initial M.
Yep.
But this looks good to me. Thank you.
We'll make that change. Yep.
Any, anything else?
No, thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement with Teamsters Local Union 25 Supervisors Unit effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. The motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to consider the application for a common victualler license by Mahat Krupa Food LLC doing business as Tropical Smoothie Cafe, 400 Lincoln Street, Suite 22. I believe Dharov Patel, manager, is going to speak tonight. Do we have the manager online? All right, let's, what we'll do is we'll go to the next agenda item, and we'll come back and see if the manager joins us. So, let's skip to item six, which is to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day-all alcoholic beverages license to the Hingham Women's Club for Festival of Trees to be held at the Hingham Community Center on Friday, December 5, 2025, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM. Do we have Jennifer Sherman with us?
Come up.
If you could go to the podium, Ms. Sherman, just mention, state your name and address, position with the club, and what you'd like us to do tonight.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Sherman. I live at 96 LaZelle Street here in Hingham. I am the current president of the Hingham Women's Club. What we are doing or asking for is the one-day permit, so we can sell beer and a mixed cocktail at our fundraiser, the Festival of Trees, which is held December 5 during Hingham in the Square at the community center. We did this last year, thanks to you folks. It was a roaring success, and we'd like to repeat this. This fundraiser supports local charities, our scholarships. We are supporting Friends of the Homeless of the South Shore, Hingham Food Pantry, Situate Animal Shelter, Adalia Strong, SNAP, and Ark of the South Shore.
Excellent. Well, it's a wonderful event. Glad to hear last year was a great success, and it's wonderful that all the charities support with the profits from the sale of the event. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Julie, do you have any questions?
No questions. I just want to thank you and the members of the Mothers Club for putting this event on every year, or the Festival of Trees. It, I just want to acknowledge how much work it takes to put on events like that, and I just wanted to thank you and all the volunteers, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Yes. Thank you for all you do. This is an event near and dear to my heart. Thrilled to see it still ongoing and thriving. I have no concerns. The application looks complete. I see that Chief Jones signed off. Obviously, there'll be a police detail, as we have many police details during Christmas in the square, so thank you for all you do, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Great. Do any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? Oh, we do have a. Oh, okay, now, I think that's, we'll go, we'll get back to that one, okay. That's for the, all right. Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day-all alcoholic beverages license to the Hingham Women's Club for Festival of Trees to be held at the Hingham Community Center on Friday, December 5, 2025, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to return now to Agenda Item 5, which is to consider the application for a common victualler license by Mahat Krupa Food LLC doing business as Tropical Smoothie Cafe, 400 Lincoln Street, Suite 22. Dharov Patel, manager. All right, I see that we have the manager on the line. Go ahead. Could you state your name and your position, please?
Hi, my name is Dharov Patel. Can you hear me?
Mr. Patel, yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes, I'm the franchisee and owner for the Tropical Smoothie Cafe.
Tell us about your plan for the Smoothie Cafe.
So, my plan is to open the Tropical Smoothie Cafe. We have 1,600 locations across the United States, and this is going to be my first location and the first one in Hingham. And we sell smoothies and food menu items like wraps, quesadillas, and club sandwiches. Everything is fresh and made to order.
And Mr. Patel, since people are watching at home and listening, why don't you tell us exactly where you're going? Where, 400 Lincoln Street, is that near where the Starbucks is, or is that further down?
So, 400 Lincoln Street, Suite 22. This is right next to the Stop &amp; Shop.
Oh, okay, yep. Great, okay. So, you're going into the plaza down there?
Yes.
Excellent, great. Well, it sounds like a fantastic, a fantastic business proposal. People in town love smoothies. We can't get enough of them, actually, so this is great, and I wish you the best of luck. Any questions?
I'm excited to see this application. I think it will be a great addition. I did just want to clarify the days and hours of operation. So, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to, I'm assuming 9:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. So, it just says 9:00 AM on the application, Mr. Patel, so I just want to make sure we fix that.
So, Monday, sorry, Monday to Friday, it's 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Saturday, Sunday, it is 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. Very good.
Julie, any questions?
No, no further questions.
All right. Do any members of the public have any questions or concerns about this agenda item? Is there any way you can pull up the, yeah, something now, okay. All right, seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a common victualler license to Mahat Krupa Food LLC doing business as Tropical Smoothie Cafe located at 400 Lincoln Street, Suite 22, Hingham, in accordance with the application for a common victualler license filed with the Town of Hingham on October 27, 2025, effective through December 31, 2025. This approval is contingent upon receipt of a food permit issued by the Board of Health.
And I'll just know, as amended, the hours of operation, and second, that motion.
All those in favor, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Motion carries unanimously. All right, Mr. Patel, good luck.
Wonderful.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Just one comment.
Hold on, wait one second, wait one second.
Before you leave, Mr. Patel, Tom, so does Mr. Patel need to apply for another application? This just says through the end of the year. So, January 1?
I don't know. I'm going to ask Sharon McMillan.
Or she can just follow up with him? I just don't want there to be any, you know, lapse because of a misinterpretation.
Yeah, Mr. Patel, the vote allows your business to operate through December 31, 2025. Are you, are you following that?
Yes, so I need to reapply for 2026?
Correct. Well, yeah, you need to, you need to check in with Sharon in our office, first of all, to amend the hours of operation, as Liz pointed out, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and then you need to come back and see us probably in December.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
All right. Good luck, Sharon. Best of luck. Looking forward to seeing your business.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to consider the agreement with Allied Consulting Engineering Services Incorporated for engineering design services for a new HVAC chiller system at the Hingham Public Library. So, we have with us David Secarret, Chief of Contract and Procurement. Do you want to just take us through this, and then we also have maybe Stephen to help as well?
Sure, yes.
Stephen, do you want to come and join him?
Sure.
Yeah.
Do you want Stephen to start?
Um, do you want, do you want to start off, Stephen? Yeah.
Sure.
And then, obviously, we know Stephen Weiss, just your position with the library board, that'd be great.
16 Carlton Road, Hingham. I'm a library trustee and chair of the Operations Committee.
Can you put your mic on? Press that button.
Thank you for coming in.
There you go.
I'm still Chair of the Operations Committee and trustee of the library.
All right, Stephen, walk us through what you're asking us to do tonight.
So, the request is to approve the signing of a contract not to exceed $80,000 for engineering design services for a new HVAC chiller system at the Hingham Public Library. This is a high need for the library, as it was, the original equipment was installed in 2001, and many of the parts needed to continue the system operating are no longer available, and so time is actually not on our side to get the design work done, so that we can have a request to the Capital Outlay Committee for Fiscal 27 to have this voted on at town meeting, either on its own or as part of the capital plan.
David, do you want to add anything?
So, yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, Linda's been, you know, and her team has been working really hard on this, I think, over the last, like, year to get this done, so I'm excited for her to enter this part of the process. There is a letter, you know, that she did prepare. If, in her absence, I'm happy to read into the record.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. So, the Hingham Public Library has requested that the town enter into the agreement with Allied Consulting Engineering Services Incorporated for the engineering design services for the new HVAC chiller system at the Hingham Public Library for an amount not to exceed $80,000. Full funding for this work in the amount of $80,000 has been approved and is currently available for immediate expenditure in this year's FY26 library capital budget. The current cooler chiller system was installed in 2001, and many core system components are at the end of their useful life. As parts continue to fail, we find that the replacement parts are no longer being manufactured, making necessary repairs costly and difficult, if not nearly impossible. In order to continue to provide reliable and uninterrupted cooling capacity to the building without disruption to library services, the entire system will need to be replaced. Potential benefits include increasing energy efficiency and associated cost savings. Allied Consulting Engineering Services has provided the town with a proposal for $80,000 that would include schematic design consisting of reviewing of existing site conditions and preparation of preliminary equipment selections, load estimates, and impact of these existing electrical systems suitable for budget pricing, construction documents consisting of detailed load estimates, final design documents, drawings, and specifications sealed by a professional engineer, and construction phase services consisting of assistance in responding to RFI's, site visits during construction, preparation of final punch lists, and resolution to any outstanding issues. Finally, the goal would be to complete the schematic design and construction documents necessary to request funding and solicit bids as soon as next fiscal year for replacement of the chiller system. The existing system needs to be replaced before it fails or is unable to be repaired due to unavailable parts. During the summer months, the building gets hot, and cooling is critical in order to stay open and service to the public. The library has also served as a designated town cooling center and is important asset to the community in that we provide a comfortable place to go during the hot summer months. Replacement at this time is critical. Delay could result in additional and unexpected costs for temporary cooling systems to be installed, as well as the possible closure of the library in the summer months due to excessive heat should the system fail prior to replacement. Thank you for considering this request. Signed, Lynda Stone, Library Director. So, with that, I don't have much, as far as the contract goes, it was a very thorough letter, but as far as mentioned in the letter, that the contract is for three phases with the engineer. The three phases that were outlined, the schematic design, construction documents, and the construction phase services. Allied would be able to invoice the town on the acceptance of each of those proposals identified in the proposal, phases identified in the proposal. And as mentioned, this is funded through the capital FY26, and the term of this would be through June 30 of 2027. That would bring us to the completion of the HVAC project in the future. And as mentioned a couple times, the total contract tonight shall not exceed $80,000.
David, Stephen, thank you very much. Let me see if anybody has any questions. Julie?
Yeah, I have two questions, and Stephen, you might be able to help with them. The chiller itself, is there any, has there been any discussion about what you think the magnitude, what the library thinks the magnitude of the cost of the actual chiller replacement is?
So, the number that was in the estimate, which is, it's clear it's going to be much more than that, was 580,000. That was put in as a placeholder number in the capital outlay.
Yep.
But we know that it's going to be well in excess of that, so I wouldn't guess, at least not yet.
Okay, so it'll probably fall outside of the capital outlays general budget for the library for, maybe be a separate article?
Probably, I would, yeah.
And you would, sorry, and you would expect to add one article then for annual town meeting in the spring?
Yeah, we'll take counsel from the, after we meet with the Advisory Committee, but yes, I would think it may require its own article.
Okay. And then, just one thing, in the contract, it said following services are not included, and it mentions design of a geothermal HVAC system. So, we're not talking about geothermal for this system, which is just an electrical system?
I don't believe so. No, it's a standard, high-efficiency system.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Great. Liz, any questions?
Just a question about the invoicing. So, the three phases, does that mean there will be three invoices? Those are the milestones, the end of those phases?
That's exactly correct.
Okay. Okay, I know Linda has been talking about this for a while. This has been on the list. It's definitely a concern, not only to have the cooling center for the town, people to be able to enjoy the library, but to protect our materials as well. So, I certainly see the importance and urgency here, so thank you for bringing it forward.
Do any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Allied Consulting Engineering Services, Inc., for engineering and design services for a new heating, ventilation, and air-conditioned HVAC chiller system at the Hingham Public Library in an amount not to exceed $80,000.
Second.
All those in favor, Julie?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. Motion carries unanimously. Stephen, good to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And David, thanks for helping out there, too. Next item on the agenda is appointments and/or reappointments. Any appointments this evening, Liz?
No.
Julie?
No.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment. Yvette, come on up. If you could just take your name and address, please.
Yvette Cantor, 442 Main Street. I am coming to ask, and Bill and I had a conversation on the weekend, you know, about the SNAP crisis. I'm wondering what the town is doing to help with that. We do have over 700 people who are impacted, and I wanted to share something that a group of residents are doing to hopefully help, but was hoping to just get in front of this and be able to let the town know what's going on.
So, why don't we take the town question first, and then give you a chance to let you know what other resources are out there?
Sure. Mr. Call earlier, I apologize. I was in a meeting. So, we just posted this evening, if it's not out, it will be out in the morning. I don't know if she did it before she left, but a list of all of the services and available resources for any constituency, whether you're a senior, a veteran, general public, what are the available resources, both local, regional, and state, and that's all been listed into a document with links and put on the website. In addition to that, we'll be meeting with the Second Parish Church and the Hingham Food Pantry to gauge their needs. We have some ideas, if needed, on a food distribution plan if the need amps up, but we'll be meeting with Susan, hopefully this week, and talking to her about that.
When we have these crises, which hopefully we will not have anymore, does the town have reserve funds that they can tap into if necessary?
So, it's a tricky question. Not sure, there's a question of our ability to spend taxpayer dollars on charitable organizations, so that is an issue that we would have to overcome, but very much issue-dependent, I think. We would obviously work with counsel, and, you know, there are ways to potentially get money if needed, but the question of legality would be a bigger one.
Right. I'm going to go with a no.
Maybe. Like I said, it depends on the situation.
And that's okay. I'm just asking the question. So, there's about eight women who got together about a week and a half ago, and we started neighbors helping neighbors. And basically, we are, we've raised money, and we are raising money, to which St. John's Church has been very gracious to be the collection point for us. But we're raising money in order to just help people in the moment, like this is a moment. The way SNAP delivers is it's every week, there's a group of people who, so you might be the first week, the second week, the third week, the fourth week, so this is going to kind of be coming at us in waves. But the aim is to get the people when they need it in the moment without a lot of red tape. I'm going to, I printed the email, and I'm going to give it to you. I have sent this to Heather Rodriguez, to Shannon Burke, and to Jen Young, so that they have the information. We have a clinical social worker, Allison Horton, who is the only person who knows who you are. The rest of us are just kind of working. It's Allison Horton, it's Rory Early, it's Kim Wintrap, Kenzie Blackwell, Jessica Foley, myself, Linda Luke, and Julie Mitchellson, and I have to tell you, I've done the least amount of work. They have been amazing in what's kind of happened over a week, but we are there as a resource for the, for people in town and actually in other towns, too. We're just trying to bridge that gap. Let's hope it doesn't last long. So, it's really for anyone. It did start with SNAP, but there are definitely federal workers who aren't getting paid, and then there are just people that kind of need it in the moment, so we're going to do it as long as this continues. So, there is that for people, and we've put signs around town for people to be able to access the information, and we'll put signs around for people who want to, you know, donate. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Yeah, dream team. Thank you.
Thank you, Yvette. Appreciate all you're doing. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, seeing none. Before I entertain a motion to go into executive session under Item 12 of the agenda, I hereby declare that discussion of this agenda item in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of, actually, hold on a second. We didn't do reports. Let's, let me backtrack a second and go to town administrator select board reports, and we start with ours.
I've got nothing this evening.
Tom? Nothing, thank you. Julie?
I don't have anything.
Liz?
Are you going to talk about Veterans Day?
I was, but you can do it.
No, no, that's fine.
You do it, you do it.
No, no. I just don't want to forget.
I've got, I've got two items this evening. Last Saturday, I attended the, I attended the Hingham Fire Department's Open House at the new public safety facility. It was a fantastic event, estimated about 500 residents attended, and what the fire department did at this event, they demonstrated a vehicle extraction rescue. If someone was trapped in a car, they, they took, actually showed the equipment they would use to actually cut the door off of the car to remove the injured party. They did a hoist demonstration with ropes and a pulley system if somebody was trapped in an area where they had to hoist a stretcher down, and they also showed how to use fire hoses. It was a really fantastic event. So, want to give a shout out to firefighter paramedics Ben Yozio and Eddie Gassell, who ran point for the fire department on this event, but the entire, the entire department was there helping out, chief was there, Deputy Chief Lechance, Deputy Chief Levinson, and it was really just a great day. So, my compliments to the fire department for doing that. Also, next Tuesday is our Veterans Day Ceremony. The day starts at 8:30 here at Town Hall for the Corporal, Lance Corporal Lawrence St. Laurent Annual Breakfast. That's going to run from 8:30 to 10:30 on the second floor of Town Hall. Then at 11 o'clock, our ceremony begins in Sanborn Auditorium. We have some great speakers this year, so please come. The 8:30 breakfast is for veterans and their families, so please take advantage of it. It's really, it's a wonderful event held every year.